Welcome, everybody. I'm going to open up this Board of Education meeting. It is Monday, July 21, 2025. It is 6:10 PM, and we are in the Nashua North Boardroom. Ms. Lamphier, can you do the roll call, please?
Sure. So Ms. Darling is not here. I am here. Ms. Raymond stepped out. She should be back shortly. Ms. Prin?
Here.
Mr. Claffey is not here. Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Here.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
And Ms. Bishop?
Here.
And then we have Dr. Andre, Mr. Poska, Dr. Scott Patti, and Ms. DeGray.
Oh, thank you.
And we have both of our student reps, Student Rep Amid and Student Rep Shaw.
When you are done with the opening statement, Ms. Daniels-Williams, can you lead us in the pledge?
As elected officials, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding, which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, we have our presentation. Dr. Scott Patti is going to walk us through our DIBELS data. So I will hand the floor over to you.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening. All right. So the DIBELS is the tool that we use at the elementary level as a screener for literacy. It's given three times a year, typically September, January, and May slash June. So it was asked at the June board meeting if we could have a brief presentation with some highlights from our data from this past school year. So the first slide that you'll see, this shows the composite score. So it's all of the data for students kind of averaged out. And it's showing the percent on or above expected level at the beginning of the year and the end of the year. So the blue represents the beginning of the year composite score average for all students. And the red indicates the end-of-year composite score average percent or above, percent on or above grade level for students in K to 5. So you'll see some really nice growth, kind of more in that 30% to 40% proficient range to start the year, and then up at the 60% and above range as we look at the end of the year. You'll notice a bit of an anomaly in grade 4 there. Interestingly, if you look at the middle-of-year data point, that is much higher. And then it dipped at the end of the year. So we're -- and that was consistent across buildings, which indicates to me it may be an issue with the test itself and what was on that end-of-year assessment versus middle-of-the-year, or it could be an issue with the program we're using in 4th grade. So that's a piece we're digging into to kind of get a little bit more information on why that went up and then back down in grade 4. But with that, I think we see some really nice work and effort of our students, our teachers, and our administrators focusing on literacy and working to improve those scores over the course of the school year. Yes?
I'm just curious. So we're using, for phonics instruction, K through 3, they should be using foundations, right?
Correct.
What are they using in 4? Because I know it ends at grade 3. What are they doing for like grammar, phonics? Do they have a program that they're using?
Yeah. So actually, in grades 3, 4, and 5, those pieces are embedded within CKLA.
Okay.
It's the skills and knowledge components that we have in 3, 4, or 5. Foundations is used as that piece for K to 2, along with Hegarty, which covers phonemic awareness skills. Grade 3 is kind of that transition year where, as needed, foundations can be used at that Tier 1 level to fill in gaps as well. And it's also used as a Tier 2 intervention at that level.
Okay.
This next slide is really interesting. It's not intuitive to see what it means. So if you look at this, starting all the way on the left, what that shows is there, at the beginning of the year, there were 1,331 students whose composite score was in the red, so 2 or more grade levels below. What that shows is, at the end of the year, we moved 217 of those students out of red and into yellow, 166 from red to green, and 42 from red up to blue, which is above grade level. So some nice growth there. I do think that that's an area, as we look to next year, that we want to look at what programming and structures are we using at that Tier 3 level to really address the needs of our students who start off the most behind, so we can accelerate that further. Because if you see in that next box over, for students who started in the yellow, so 1 year below expected level, we had 703 students, and we moved far more of them to grade level or above. So we see 330 of those students were on level at the end of the year, and 87 were above level, which is excellent. So we saw some really nice movement at that Tier 2 level. We want to see more of that at the Tier 3 level, students that are starting further behind. So that's a piece that we're going to look at this coming year with our teacher teams and administrators. And then similarly, we're seeing students who are starting on level in that green, 1,090 students. 492 of those students moved to above level at the end of the year. So again, some really nice growth and movement there. And that last block is students that started above level, the majority ended above level, right? And again, looking, how are we differentiating to push those students and make sure they're continuing to learn and grow as well?
I'm just wondering where you got the numbers for the students? Is it a total of the -- I mean, how come one's 1,331? Is that a total of the kids that took the test? If they all add up together?
No. So if you look at all of the elementary students K to 5, so it's taking their beginning-of-the-year composite score. And if that beginning-of-the-year score was in the red, meaning that there were 2 or more levels below grade level, that's that 1,300 students. So it's taking all of our elementary students and chunking them into the four categories based on what their beginning-of-the-year score was.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Good question. All right. This next slide shows, it's very similar to the beginning, the first slide that we talked about, except this is just for our students who are identified as our English learners. It's interesting in that it shows a very similar trend, right? Looks very similar. We will see that those overall proficiency levels are a bit lower, so kind of topping out in that 40% to 50% proficient range as opposed to more the 60% proficient range. But very similar trends in terms of growth. Again, an area we're continuing to track and work on and look at our programming to make sure that students, all of our students are making the most growth. And then breaking this down a little bit further, so we've been looking at the composite score, which is their overall score. One of the indicators in the lower grades that we really look at is that Nonsense Word Fluency Score, which is what's shown here. Really, that's an indicator of their phonics skills. So this shows that growth in their phonics skills in grades 1, 2, and 3. Kindergarten's a little tricky because they don't have the beginning-of-the-year score for this indicator. So again, seeing some nice growth there. This is a piece that we are continuing to work with, with our K to 3 teachers. And we did just purchase the decodable readers that go along with the Foundations Tier 1 program for use in all of our K to 2 classrooms to continue to be able to differentiate and work on these skills in our small groups with students as well. And then the last sub-skill that I pulled out was our oral reading fluency. So looking at this across grades 1 through 5, so this is really kind of, once you have those foundational skills, can you apply it to text and read fluently? So we do see some nice growth in grade 1 and a bit in grade 2. It is a piece that we really want to look at in grades 3, 4, and 5 to see why that flattens out a bit. We are still seeing scores up around that 60% proficiency range, but we're not seeing as much growth in those grade levels there, which could be an indication of it's maybe not something that's emphasized in our current program. And we may need to look at how we can supplement and continue to make sure students are getting enough practice reading so that they can be fluent and proficient readers. The piece not assessed very well with the DIBELS is comprehension, reading comprehension. There's a very basic screener that's part of it. That's not a very accurate indicator of actual reading comprehension. So that is a piece that we're working on with the 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade teachers. And we have some teams doing some curriculum work this summer to really look at the standards for comprehension. Where are they taught in CKLA? Are we making sure we're really hitting those standards in our teaching? And then what are some pieces from the CKLA assessments that we can pull out and use as common assessments to make sure that we're ensuring students are able to apply all of these skills that they're learning to actually read and understand text? That is a very brief overview and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I just have a question. So when we're looking at this bar graph, what is the goal? Like I said, I see that it goes up to 60%. Is that goal, is that equivalent to 100% as I'm looking at this? Or is it literally at 60%? I'm just trying to figure out what I'm looking at.
Yeah, no, great question. So our goal would be to have 100% of students demonstrating mastery of that skill, which would be 100%. The graphs just automatically, you know, adjust themselves so that they fit on the page nicely. So that's why it cuts at 60 there. But not 100% would be our goal.
So the numbers for this are under 60%? That's a correct read of that?
Correct.
That's what -- thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I apologize. I missed the beginning. Do we have data about how other districts are doing on these metrics? And I'm asking that because I'm wondering if there are things that we can, I don't know, steal from them and use if they have something that's working in a way that our programming is not working as well? Does that make sense?
It does. I do not have that data. I could look and see if that's something that we could have access to.
That don't mean steal. I mean, learn and engage in a cooperative exchange of ideas.
Correct.
Graciously borrow.
Ms. Prin?
Yeah, so I'm curious too because I know one of the important things is making sure that there's time for differentiation and working in small groups. So most foundations, about half hour to 45 minutes, and the CKLA block's like an hour and a half. It's long. So is there time built into the classroom schedules for teachers so that they can do small groups, too?
Yes and no. So it's not blocked exactly like that in the schedule. But one of the pieces, I completely agree with you. I think we need to get more time for teachers to be meeting with small groups to do this work, right? And there are built-in win blocks, right? But also, that's also in students if they have a pull-out service or ELL service is getting that piece. So I think when we start a new curriculum, it's very -- you're learning the curriculum, right? And you're kind of teaching through it until you can know what's really important. These are the pieces that need to be taught. This, you know, I might need to teach one year based on the students in front of me, but maybe I don't need to do that activity the following year, or this group needs it, but not this group, right? You get better at that as you become more familiar with the curriculum. So that's a piece that on our PD days this year, teachers will have half of that day. We're going to do some targeted literacy work to really refine our implementation around the CKLA piece and make sure that it's being driven by what are the standards? What do kids really need to know? And what do the students in front of me know? And what do they need to be able to move forward? And how can we match that? And tighten up that whole class, the whole group CKLA part of the lesson so that it's not as long? And we have more time to get it. It can be very long. So how can we tighten that up and kind of take out things that are not critical so we can get to those critical pieces of the small group differentiated instruction?
Okay, okay, that's nice. Yeah, I piloted CKLA in 3rd grade last year. And yeah, those lessons are very long. It's, yeah, they're long. Okay.
Ms. Lamphier? Oh, sorry.
Excuse me. Oh, God. I just forgot what I was going to say. But I have another question. How does this compare to some of the other years we've done this?
I think it's pretty consistent. I don't have all those numbers right in front of me, but I think we've seen similar trends over the years.
Okay. And I remember my other question now. So I know that in some of the standardized testing, a lot of children opt out. And I didn't, and it's kind of skewed the numbers. I didn't know if that was the case with this as well.
I don't, to my knowledge, we don't have students opting out of this.
Should we, oh, sorry, I'm interrupted. Should we explain what the DIBELS is for people who might not know? I'm very familiar with it. But it is essentially, it depends on what screener. It's literally a 1-minute screener. It takes like 5 minutes to do all the different elements of it, depending on the grade level. So it's not like one of those where the kids have to sit down and take a standardized test. It's really fast.
Thank you for explaining that.
No problem.
Did you have something to say, Dr. Andre?
Sure.
Oh.
Sorry, real quick. So is this one in elementary school, the teacher would, or someone would take me outside the room next to the lockers and sit down with me and talk with me for a minute?
Yeah, and you'd have to read the list of words, like "bip" and "doff" and "boof" and stuff. Yep, that was the DIBELS.
I see. Very nice.
Yes, it is a one-on-one, individual, brief assessment, a screener.
No, I just wanted to really commend Dr. Scott Patti in reviewing the data and the approach to the solution. As you can see, I think Ms. Daniel Williams' question highlighted, like, are we satisfied with 50% proficient? That means 50% of the students aren't getting it. So it's not a kid issue, per se. It's really, as Dr. Scott Patti's looking at it, how do we improve the systems and ask the right question? So really commend the approach that we're taking, looking at the data from how does it align with our Tier 1 instruction, our CKLA, those other programs? So how do we improve our infrastructure and supports to our teachers so that we can actually improve the implementation and look at our data differently? So oftentimes, to address your question is, we look at an individual, like, we're going to intervene on the student as opposed to the system. And this, right now, we're looking at the system. Do we have a deeper understanding of the standards? Do we understand the program? How do we look at our schedules? So evaluate our infrastructure in order to see if that makes a difference as opposed to it's a one-on-one intervention for kids. That's still going to happen, but that's not always the right solution.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
So I want to say thank you to Dr. Scott Patti. I believe that this is her first official meeting as elementary superintendent. So thank you for that. And on your first meeting, you brought us data that we've been wanting. So thank you so very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you to Dr. Andre for everything that he just said. I just want to know, how are we going to carry that out? How are we going to make sure that we are assessing the kids and growing them up within this year to do this? Because it's so important. Reading is fundamental. These are reading scores, and we're under 60%. So I'm so thankful to have the data this early, before the start of the school year. Thank you so very much. But now is the time for action. What are we going to do about it?
I can speak a little bit to our PD plan. And then if you want to jump in, Dr. Andre, to add anything. So we have a lot of great expertise in this district through some of our administrators, our reading specialists, and our teachers who've been doing really great work with literacy for a long time. So one of the approaches that we're using is really tapping into some of that and bringing back some of the curriculum teams and that curriculum work to really dig in. I think part of it is, like I said, kind of mining through the program to see what's good, what don't we need, what's the actual standard, and how are we going to target that? So we have curriculum teams working this summer for grades 3, 4, and 5 that are doing curriculum maps of this work for all of the units, or for the beginning units of CKLA at those grade levels. And that will be work that we then tackle on that September 9th PD day. They're going to kind of co-lead those sessions with their peers so that this can be a consistent rollout and refinement across those grade levels. Not, next week, we're starting that work with K to 2, with the leadership team that's going to get that work kicked off of doing the curriculum work, K to 2. And then between those PD days next year, there'll be continuation of that work in those curriculum teams at all of the grade levels so that we're really targeting that refinement. And then if pieces come up that, you know, no one in the group knows the answer to how we do this better, and we need to bring in some outside PD at that point, we can do that. I think also remembering we have a lot of expertise within this district that we need to tap into and work on that collaboration, putting our heads together and focusing in on what we need to do.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yeah, this is just a quick question about the data. Do you have like more specific data that shows like how many students are like maybe within 5 points of being on level but just aren't there yet? But they're like, they're this close, but because they're not there yet, they're counted as like below grade level or?
Yeah, that's a great question. And that's really work that the buildings, it's done at the building level. So we could pull that for the district. But I think for what you're speaking to, the use of that would be to really target, right? Who are the students that need maybe a little bit more in this area versus who are the students that maybe need a lot more in this area? So at the end of the year, all of the principals met with their leadership teams to dig into their own building data, to look at the trends for their building as well as to look at student needs and to come up with a reflection on that data. And then how are they using that to drive their professional development for the coming year within their buildings? And then also, after each administration, they're looking at that data for the individual students to guide their interventions and their work in the classroom. And then students that are below level get a shorter version of this, of progress monitoring, done every couple of weeks to track and make sure that they're continuing to make progress towards their goals. So yes, and that's happening at the building level.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Speaking of building levels, how consistent are these numbers amongst all of the elementary schools?
I would say the trends are the same. Kind of the level that it falls at, the percentage varies. Kind of similar to what we saw with the ELL versus the beginning. The trend remains, but the overall numbers shift.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Just looking at the results and everything, 5th grade would have been starting school around COVID if I'm correct, or?
Yeah, I believe they were our 1st graders, right?
Do you think that has some influence in why their results are lower?
It could be, right? I think to, you know, certain extent, how long can we kind of blame that?
Right, of course.
Right? And as tempting it is for me to say yes, that's definitely what that is. Maybe, it could be. But I think there's other pieces we need to look at as well.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So I have one about the data, but not necessarily about the data. So now that you've been able to look at the data, you're working on PD with the teachers. How are they liking the new curriculum that we've rolled out 2 years ago? Which we're doing the data on today. How are they look?
That's a big question. And, you know, maybe a bigger question than the scope of this presentation entirely. But I'd say like with most new curricula, there are mixed, there's mixed feedback on it. Some people really love all of it. Some people hate all of it. Some people really like these pieces of it but are struggling with these pieces. And I think as we become more familiar with it and have a little bit more agency over how we utilize it as a curriculum tool to teach the standards and to teach the students that are in front of us, people will get more comfortable with doing that fluidly.
Ms. Prin?
So my question has to do with foundations. Have there been people, have people been trained in it? Do we have PD around maybe foundations? Part of this is the phonics piece for the DIBELS. And I know sometimes teachers have to change grade levels. And also, you have a lot of new, young people. Are people getting trained in that program?
That's a good question. From my past experience with foundations, I've used it for a number of years. It is pretty straightforward in terms of executing that. And from what I have seen in my past use of it, oftentimes, the reading specialist or literacy coach can do that training for a new teacher so that they can get up to speed on that. I don't believe we've been offering, kind of been funding annual retrainings through the company. But certainly something I could look into.
Yeah, it would be something to think about, too, for like PD, and maybe even just PD on the early release days or something, to have like a refresher for people who need to. When I changed grade levels, it was really beneficial. And I had been in first grade for years and years, and I could do it in my sleep. And then I moved to third grade and it was totally different at a different grade level. So it's just something to think about.
Yeah, good point. Thank you.
So one more thing to double back to that. I think that we assured the teachers that we would do the PD and help them along with this process as we bought their curriculum. We're going to give you the PD, we're going to train you. And now we just got a new curriculum this year. Do we have a plan? The foundations came in this year?
No.
It's been, it's been a few years, yeah.
Okay, there was something that we just got more of today. I'm sorry, I didn't.
Oh, sorry. We, out of Title IV funds, we had purchased some readers that go along with the Tier One Foundations Program. So they teach the lesson to the whole class. And then these are bundles of five readers that complement what they just taught so for kids, to give kids more practice in a small group. So it's just a resource that supplements the, the main curriculum.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, last year, all elementary teachers received professional development in CKLA. That's what we assured them, which.
Okay. Well, thank you for that conversation and thank you, Dr. Skirpatty, for all of that information. I hope you enjoy being in the hot seat because we'd like to have you back with more information.
Anytime. Thank you for letting me share that.
Really happy to share for the time being. Okay, so this brings us up to our consent agenda. I would be looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Can I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Raymond. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. This brings us up to our public question comment period. Did anybody sign up? I can only guess it's Mr. Hoffman.
Vote it.
I don't even need the list. Gary Hoffman, 28 Perham Street.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Close enough, Townhouse D. So Gary Hoffman, 38 Perham Street, Townhouse D, Nashua, New Hampshire. The part of the agenda I'm speaking about today is the proposed policy J I C J. It is the policy regarding cellphone and electronic communication usage. When I was looking at the agenda and I probably missed this, is this just the, you know, this, I, I know this isn't a question and answer, but if this is just the first reading tonight, my assumption is that it will go back to Policy Committee and then come back to the full board. But the next full board meeting isn't until August 25th. We may want to do, have a policy rate to go a little bit sooner than that because in the committee work, when we were first looking at this policy, we noticed that parent communication and getting the word out on what the expectations are for the first day of school is going to be really important if we're going to have a successful rollout. So, you know, certainly I wouldn't want to rush anything, but we, we may want to have a final approved version of this policy a little quicker. Secondly, in reading the proposed policy, under the consequences, just something to consider, when they have the first offense, second offense, subsequent offenses, my assumption is that this is for one school year, but it's not stated anywhere. You may want to make that clear, that you put that in there. And when I read it, I wasn't, it wasn't clear to me whether this was, these were the offenses with one particular teacher or throughout the whole school. You might want to make that a little clearer. I wasn't sure if this was, you know, if there were multiple staff members warning a student or if this is an issue with the same staff member. Third, where it says, when you look at the one, two, three, four piece, when you, under part three, you know, the staff member in the second offense is notifying the parent. And then you have the staff member and perhaps the assistant principal also notifying the parent that might be a little bit overkill. You might just want to make it maybe an administrator at the third offense part only. I can only imagine it might be a little bit much for a parent to get several emails all at once. And last but not least, when you're looking at number four, where it says may result in progressive disciplinary action. But then, and with the district's code of conduct, but then up top before first offense, it said this is all within policy J I C. You might just want to make that more specific and make that number four maybe like a class two offense. So that's what I have, having a, thank you.
Thank you. I was taking notes on what Mr. Hoffman was saying. Okay, this brings us up to our superintendent's comments. I will hand the floor over to Dr. Andre.
Thank you. As we move through the heart of the summer, I just want to take a moment to share some important updates and express my gratitude to the many individuals working behind the scenes to support our students, families, and staff. Summer school, our summer school program is going strong between our extended year, extended school year, ELL services, Power Scholars Academy, and other enrichment offerings. Nearly 700 students are engaged in learning across the district this summer. Special thank you to our dedicated teachers, paraeducators, administrators, support staff, and food service who are ensuring these programs run smoothly and effectively. I also have to give a shout out to the transportation department. The buses have been on time and, and which is a good sign of what should come in September or August. Plan operations, I also like to recognize and thank our plan operations team for the exceptional efforts. Summer is their busiest time of year. And the amount of work they accomplish to prepare our schools for a successful start in August is truly remarkable. We deeply appreciate their commitment and expertise. In professional development, as Dr. Scott Petty said, there's a number of teachers and administrators engaged in professional learning this summer. Professional growth continues also with our administrative team who recently participated in a retreat focusing on strengthening Tier One instruction and using AI-powered tools and strategic change management practices. These learning opportunities are essential as we work together to build stronger systems for student success. Strategic planning, we have held three of our six scheduled strategic planning meetings so far with the next session scheduled to take place this Wednesday. This plan will serve as a guiding document as we prepare to engage in important and courageous conversations about the future of our schools. Thank you to all who have participated and shared their perspectives. We look forward to the continued collaboration. And a public service announcement, a quick reminder to all families, please verify that your contact information is accurate in Aspen. Having the correct home address, phone number is essential as we recognize finalize our bus routes and communicate important information before the school year starts. So thank you for all your continued support. I hope you are enjoying a safe, restful, and joyful summer. Thank you.
Excellent. This brings us up to our board response to the superintendent's comments. I'll start over here with Ms. Raymond.
Oh, thank you. And, and thank you, Dr. Andre. I'm so excited to hear that transportation is going well this summer. Yay. I just wanted to piggyback on getting ready for the school year. We all, I, I got an email from my school's principal asking me to respond with the contact information. So that is an appropriate way to do it too, if you can't get into Aspen like some of us. Also, Nashua Goes Back to School Night will be happening before our next meeting. So that is on August the 21st at the library at 5:30, I think. So I hope everyone goes because hopefully we will have information to share with families about cell phones amongst other things at that meeting, at that event. That's it.
Ms. Prin?
No comment.
Okay.
Anything good to say?
Mr. Johnson?
No comment tonight.
Ms. Gilio?
No comment.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
No comment. Thank you so much.
Ms. Lamphier?
No comment.
Wow. All right, I'll keep the, I'll keep it going, no comment. This brings us over to our student reps comment time. I don't know where you guys are on the back and forth, so whoever starts speaking will have the floor. Okay, Mr. Shaw?
I just want to say that the cellphone policy meeting was very nice. That's it.
That's it?
That's it. No comment.
Okay, excellent. Love this. I love this for us. Okay, we don't have committee on budget. This will bring us up to committee on finance and operations, so I will hand the floor over to Ms. Lamphier.
Okay, so the first motion I have tonight is a motion to approve the two-year contract with effective school solutions for development, implementation, and evaluation of social, emotional, and behavioral, behavior programming in an amount not to exceed $500,000 over the next two years. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Daniels-Williams. And I don't know if anyone has any questions on it. It's kind of different, a different setup than what we've usually seen. And this, this ESS is going to be working with the kids at Broad Street in Project Achieve, Project Achievement? I'm sorry. I always get Broad Street and Broad Street. Broad Street, they're going to be at Broad Street. And if anyone has any other questions, go ahead, ask, ask away.
Ms. Raymond and Ms. Prin?
Oh, I, I just want to say, I, I came to policy, to policy, to finance last week specifically because of this contract. And I was, I'm excited to see that this is going into place at Broad Street. I know Ms. Lamphier and I, and Ms. Darling, who's not here, have been paying attention to restraints and seclusions and incidents over the last couple of years. We worked really hard on a policy that had Dr. Andre review every single incident across the district. And I'm excited to see that Dr. Andre took the information that he was learning from those reviews and has created a plan to provide some extra support, starting at Broad Street. I don't think that that's the only place that could use extra support, but I, I get that we only have so much money. So, so I, I was really excited about it. Thanks.
Ms. Prin?
So I was reading in the notes that this was chosen by the special education teachers. Is this, so I'm assuming this is only going to be used with students who are on IEPs?
That's primarily. We are, the focus will be on the project achievement classrooms. But we also know some programming happens in regular ed classrooms. So we're hoping again to, some of the strategies will become universal across the district, or the school.
Always nice when the regular education teachers can know what the other kids are doing too. Yeah, okay. Thanks, that's all I needed.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the two-year contract with ESS for the amount not to exceed $500,000 for two years, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Okay, next I have a motion to approve the special education contracts, which are listed on the, on the finance and operations memo dated July 15th, 2025, under their corresponding accounts.
Oh, Ms. Raymond?
Yep.
Sorry.
Ms. Raymond got that.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the special education contracts listed in the finance and operations memo dated July 15th, 2025, under the corresponding accounts, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
And finally, I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 25 June transfer report.
Second.
Thank you.
Ms. Daniels-Williams, any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the June transfer report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Awesome. You guys had a busy meeting again, huh?
Yes, it was very interesting. And if anyone wants to watch it, it's very, it's riveting stuff.
I think it is. Okay, so this brings us up to Ms. Raymond, committee on policy, something about a cellphone policy?
All right, thank you. So we have J I C J, student use of personal electronic communication devices. I don't know if people know or not, but there were a couple of bills about cell phones working their way through the legislature. At the end of the day, in the budget, there was language that passed that took effect as of July 1st, so it's already in state law, that bans all personal electronic communication device use by students in public schools from the bell that begins the day to the bell that ends the day, with certain exceptions for IEPs, 504s, English language learners, and then other acute issues as they might arise approved by the superintendent. So I don't know. Someone who's having medical distress and they need to monitor their heart rate or something, I don't know, has to be something significant. So we did quite a bit of work. We started working on this before the law was passed. There's a group of teachers who had been working on it since September or October. And then we met in June and again in July with a couple of proposals. So we have a couple of options tonight. Typically on a first reading, I just let people know and then we give the public another chance to come in for public comments. There's no public here. And our next meeting, as Mr. Hoffman pointed out, isn't until right before. Well, there's, there's three public, four public people here. No one signed up other than Mr. Hoffman to talk, which isn't really a lot of feedback from our community. I appreciate everyone who's here. However, it's not a robust public comment section where we have a variety of viewpoints being expressed by the community. So we have kind of two options for moving forward. The district really needs to have the opportunity to get this information about what we pass out to parents and guardians and school staff in time for them to review it and be prepared for the first day of school. If we wait until our next meeting, that is not enough time. So we can suspend the rules, debate it, and pass it tonight with whatever changes need to be made. Or we can ask for a special meeting to come back in like a week or two and do it then. I hate to have a special meeting for just this if we don't have a lot of public asking for that. But I don't, it's up to the board.
Well, let's look for consensus. I think we have been talking about this for a significant amount of time and we have asked for the public's input. I think it's been in the media, it's been on our radar in board meetings. I think it's been talked about within the community. So I feel like whatever input that we are going to have from the public has had the option of making its way here. So if we're okay talking about it and voting on it tonight, I'm, I, I feel like this is more than our second reading.
I mean, I'm happy to.
Especially given the length of conversation you guys had about it in policy, which I think we could debate that could technically be a first reading.
Well.
Technically. Semantics.
I, I don't know.
Does need to get out before the school year.
Either way, I do have the answers to Mr. Hoffman's questions that he asked, so I'm happy to share that momentarily, one way or the other.
Hi, guys.
Hi. I think we should vote on this and like debate it all today because it's really, there's nothing that crazy about it. It's quite a non-controversial bill.
Okay. Mr. Ahmed?
I mean, yeah, there's nothing really we can change considering the law is so strict.
Right, right. That's kind of what I was thinking too. Who else had their hand up? Oh, Ms. Daniels-Williams?
So I was thinking that we should be able to do it by the way that it's supposed to be done. We just heard that there should be some changes to it and us as a board should talk about the changes to be made, but we should come back and do it instead of suspending rules again. But it's up to the board.
Okay, well, we can.
I will concede to what the board decides. But again, we're going to suspend rules, change things, and not, the public's not going to have access to that change. So right is right.
So in, in my opinion, this is going to be such a new policy that I have a feeling that we're going to be two weeks into school and we're going to start seeing possible glaring holes and we're going to need to readdress this for many, many meetings to really firm it up, depending on, you know, how reasonable it is and how it's actually working. So I would not at all consider that, once we vote on this tonight, that we're never addressing it again. I think we're going to have administration come to us with, we need to switch this and we need to modify that. I, I would not say that this is a policy that's going to be put to bed shortly, but we need to have something according to the law.
I was gonna say, why don't I address the, the questions that were posed about it and then we can make the motions?
Okay.
If that's okay with everybody. So we're, if I'm looking at J I C J, I'm going to go down to, I think we all were in agreement at the meeting that the first sections are in compliance with the law as far as what the, the law says and what the exceptions are. But then the section that people are struggling with are consequences and violations, which is section E on the fourth, no, the second page of, yeah, the second page of the policy. And so it says consequences for violation of this policy would be pursuant to policy J I C, our code of conduct policy. That policy's on our website. And that policy is very clear that a cellphone violation is a class three offense, which is considered a minor offense, and that the consequences for that under class three and J I C is that the teacher shall, A, discuss the matter with the student and warn the student. B, the teacher may then proceed as appropriate with separating the student within the classroom, like it's for stuff like passing notes or chatting or otherwise being disruptive. Contact the parent by guardian, parent guardian by telephone or email. And then the third one is develop a student behavioral contract after school detention, et cetera, et cetera. And then C, if the student does not respond to those attempts, then they send them down to the office. And so that's how J I C reads. If it continues to be a problem with any class three offense, then it becomes a class two offense and further interventions are necessary. I would not personally open up J I C and put cellphone usage under class two offenses because it says, by their nature, class two offenses are considered significant violations of student behavior standards. They require a building administrator be involved in disciplinary action. The student shall immediately be removed for the rest of the class period or for the school day. And then it talks about danger to others. And I just don't think that, you know, telling, you know, Johnny to turn off his cellphone because he forgot it on requires him to be removed for the day. Because the point of having a cellphone policy is to minimize the learning disruptions to the student. And that's what we talk about in the cellphone policy, that, that the, the purpose of the policy is to ensure that students have uninterrupted learning time. So that's about the class two. And I think our steps were based on that. So the steps in this, and now we're on J I C J, the cellphone policy. The first offense is that the teacher will remind them. It says very clearly, the teacher will not do this every day. I mean, I think that the intent was that, this is like a global thing, right? You can't be reminded by every single teacher all day long. That counts as more than one time. However, if it's one teacher. However, if it's one teacher at the beginning of September, right, and then the student doesn't forget again until December, I don't think that that automatically is a second or third offense, but that's something that I think admin and teachers need to work out, and then if they need it to be changed, to come back to us. The second offense is the teacher or staff member will notify the parent guardian. And we went round and round on this, but having looked up JIC, that's exactly what JIC says for a Class III minor offense. And then subsequent offenses after that, then the parent gets notified and/or, because maybe you just tell them twice, right? And/or the assistant, the student is sent to the assistant principal to discuss it. At that point, the assistant principal will notify the parent, and they will make a plan together for what's going to happen with the student and the cellphone for the rest of the day. And this takes it out of the hands of the classroom teacher to try and figure out. And we've got a parent guardian involved right at that point to decide what they kind of agree with or disagree with the school on what happens to that device. Because again, the point is to get the child back into the classroom, learning without interruption. I think that's it.
Mr. Poska?
I think you captured the essence of the conversation that we had. I think we had a good conversation, I think we got some good feedback from, from, from our, from Shray regarding some of that, and I think we kind of worked it out to get to this point of what it should be. And I think one of the things we've talked about is, to Ms. Raymond's point, about protecting the, protecting the classroom instructional time, is also moving, working with students and families. I think Dr. Andre was one of those who mentioned that, you know, we're treating this as some type of addiction in some ways, and I think we need to work with students and anticipate that, you know, this change is going to be a little bit of a challenge at the, at the high school level. You know, we've had some conversations with the high school administrators over the last several weeks about this, and they, they are anticipating that and trying to, you know, get the communication out. I think one of the plans that we were talking about was to have this become public tonight and then to share it with, with our community after this evening to kind of promote things, just as, as Mr. Hoffman was suggesting, to get the word out. And I think, you know, in conversations with the students, the students know this is coming. I think there is some, you know, obviously, but it's not just students in Nashua who are dealing with this, this is students across the state. So I think we're all dealing with it in our own way, and, and we have some, some steps to take. I think the administrators at the middle, and again, we have to remember, this is a K to 12 plan as well, so in conversations with the administrators at the elementary and middle school level, they appreciate this, but I think they anticipate that this is continuation of the work they already have in place at those levels. So, so I think this just kind of solidifies some of the things that they've been talking about at those levels, but, you know, I don't think, we, we're not fooling ourselves to understand that this is going to be kind of a, a bigger change in practice at the high school level and anticipate that we'll take some time to get this to where we want it to be, but getting that word out about what the expectations are are very important.
One of the things that Dr. Andre had said in our policy meeting earlier this month that I really appreciated was the idea that we want to approach the situation with respect, respect between, from, between teachers and students, and students and teachers, and, and the school with the parents, because this is something new, but we need to lead with the idea that everyone is intending to do the best that they can. And I, I think that that's a really, it's a nice culture to have around it, as opposed to coming in with, you know, people are breaking the rules on purpose and they, you know, we must punish them immediately. So.
Are we still talking about whether or not we're going to vote on the bill today, or are we, have we moved on to actually discussing the policy, and if so, should we motion for that?
So what I had suggested was that we talk about what's in the policy, and then if people have specific objections that we don't think we can resolve, then we should have the vote. But I would rather not say, well, let's put it off and then find out that we're all in agreement. Right? Or, or agree to vote tonight and then find out that half the board is like, this is terrible, I can't live with it. Right? So kind of doing it backwards.
So I, okay, I have two things then, if we're going to go into specific objections about the bill.
Okay.
Okay. So my first thing is, we talk a lot about going with, to the situation with, with respect, and I appreciate Dr. Andre brought that up. Now, I thought, while we were discussing this, I might have gotten the wrong idea, but in the second offense, it says, "The teacher slash staff member will notify the parent guardian that the student has been asked more than once to put away their device." My issue is, just like the example that Ms. Raymond brought up, if a student uses their phone in September and then uses it again in December, shouldn't it be up to teacher discretion whether or not to contact the parent or guardian? I would like to see that will, the verb will, switch to the verb may, in my opinion.
You're looking at me as though I have an opinion. I.
I think we all know my opinion on this, so I'm keeping my mouth shut.
I don't, I am not a classroom teacher or an administrator. So it is difficult for me to say what the appropriate may or shall should be. I would really want to lean on people who know what they're doing. As a parent, I don't want my first contact home that my child is struggling with their cellphone to be from their assistant principal and not from the teacher. Like, I don't want it to be a surprise to me that he's now in this, in the office because he's been playing with his cellphone, as opposed to, you know, the algebra teacher reaching out to me and being like, hey, your child is having difficulty concentrating in my class because his cellphone keeps coming off. And I, I felt this way last year, too. This is not a new feeling. So, I, I don't know.
I think one of the things we did talk about the meeting was, we, I think, originally we had some conversations, some about, should that be in the first offense? And I think that's when we talked about the respect piece and kind of working with it, and I think that's when we shifted it to moving to the second offense. And I think we kind of piggybacked on kind of some of the things that Ms. Raymond just said about kind of the communication, the collaboration between the classroom teacher and, and the house and the parent guardian about those next steps.
Oh, both of you. Okay, go ahead.
Of course, yeah. And I understand the respect part, Mr. Poska, we talked about that quite a bit as well. But what I'm saying is, I just feel like, sure, if I've been on my phone twice in the same class period or in the same week, call my mom, I understand. But if it, if I used my phone once in September and I'd been good, I haven't used it the whole year, and at the, like, another time of the year I use my phone, I don't think that you should call my mom if I've been doing a good job for six months and I just slipped up once. That's why I feel like it should be up to teacher discretion. I'm not saying remove it entirely, I just think the teacher should be able to decide whether or not you should call your mom or dad. And in this language, it doesn't give the teacher that discretion. It just says the teacher has to, or the teacher will.
This was another thing that came up. I was discussing this with our student senate advisor a couple of months ago, when we were discussing crafting a cellphone policy. It is really hard for teachers to keep track of that, because they have, I mean, they have hundreds of students that they have to look out for, and I mean, how are they going to keep track of that if, say, someone with Shray's situation, where he uses it once in September and then once in December? I don't think a teacher can keep track of that. I mean, that's like, that has to be impossible. No one's going to remember one student using their phone three months ago. So I, I do agree with Shray on that, that that will should be changed to leave it up to teacher discretion.
And I'd like to table this point, just pin it, about teachers remembering things about students. I have another note that I will bring that up again. This is probably the one time when I'm, I know what I'm talking about.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
And then there was another good point. How about if, can I, may I use your?
Yeah, they did it all.
If. If he was to do it in math class first period on Monday, in science class, two months from now, on a Thursday, is that two offenses? Who's keeping track of that? If every single time it's happening, someone's sending something to the office, like, what is, that was part of what was talked about in policy, because I sat in the back, like, what would be the tracking policy? It is something that eventually will go to the assistant principals of the building. So how, what's the tracking policy? Like, none of that is written out, it's not clear. I'm, I'm just asking. I was waiting to talk about it today on the first reading.
Ms. Lamphier and then Mr. Ahmed.
He had his hand up first.
But he just spoke.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm sorry. So I was, like.
I make the rules, Lamphier.
Okay.
I said you.
So when I was reading through this first offense and second offense, I just kind of assumed that second offense means, like, if it's becoming a problem, I don't think that any teachers are going to keep track or care if a student takes their phone out in September and then they get it in December. And also, teachers have very limited time to speak to each other, like, they're not, their focus is on, is not going to be on talking about, talking about who's using their cellphone and stuff. So, but at the same time, I think it would be.
Have to wear a necklace every time a teacher talks to you, and the amount of beads you have at the end of the day means how many times your parents have to acknowledge that you were spoken to?
But that's.
Again, I'm keeping, I'm keeping my mouth shut about this, because I, I do not.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, I think that.
How are they going to monitor them when they're in the bathroom?
Yes, but that's, that's one of the reasons why I think it's good to have this not spelled out exactly, because then it gives the teachers some leeway in deciding for themselves whether the second offense is, you know, if you see someone pull out their phone in the same class, if you see someone pull out their phone two days from now, if you see someone pull out their phone six months from now. And, you know, it, it just seems like common sense, but I don't know.
And I just want to say that this is a response to the state bill that says no longer, that went into effect for July 1st, that says from bell to bell. This is our Nashua Public Schools, School District response to that. So it has to be something in it, like, like President Bishop said, maybe it will continue to change and morph, and we have to add different things, take different things away, but like I said, we're literally pushing, we've been working on this for 11 months. So we're literally pushing this out now due to the state response of the July 1st bill. So we have to make sure that it's right. It's a response.
I supposed to call you Mr. Claffey, because that's what's right in front of you. Mr. Johnson?
No, I just want to say, being on policy, that we had very, you know, strong discussions about all this, and one of the things, to Mr. Poska's point, that we moved that will notify to the second offense, was exactly that reason of giving them that first opportunity and then giving the first contact being from a teacher, not from administrator. And when a teacher's, we're not telling the teacher what they have to say to that parent or how they have to approach it. It's just them saying, you know, what they feel is necessary to the parent. And again, I read it as, you know, the student will be directed by teacher staff to put away, as that's in that classroom. There's no need, there, there's no, you know, going from teacher to teacher, hey, so-and-so broke their phone out in, you know, first period, and, you know, keep an eye out. That's, that's not going to happen.
I don't envision this master list of cellphone offenders, but maybe.
So if I, if I may, I think there's, we could do the hypotheticals all night, if this happens or that happens, but I want to go back to kind of the way we approached it, and Ms. Bishop said it earlier, like, we're going to have to review it, revise, look at the data. But I want to keep it to two levels. One is still a, a matter of, and Ms. Raymond said it earlier, what we're looking at is building a culture of mutual respect, right? And so an adult tells you, someone to put a phone away, right? It's more that kind of, in the second answer, is a common sense approach, right? So it's September, there's probably going to be more reminders going out, like, hey, put your phone away, put your phone away, and hopefully, again, students are respectful, and they know it's coming, and they put their phone away, right? If nothing happens again until December and, you know, phone falls out of your bag or something like that, and like, hey, Shray, put your phone away, like, and it's a casual conversation, you do it and you, like, let's have common sense on, again, the mutual respect as opposed to, don't you remember on September 12th I told you to put your phone away? This is the second time, and now we're, right, like, let's, let's be like reasonable on the approach and what's the culture that we're trying to envision. I think the, what we're really getting is, is what happens with the habitual offender, which turns into a whole different, different conversation. I say, hey, Jen, put your phone away, and you're like, no, make me.
Make me, yeah, exactly.
It's not about the phone anymore.
I'm an adult.
Right? It's not about the phone. Now we're getting into.
Now we're getting into tier-two behavior on the JIC policy.
Right.
Right.
More coordination.
And that's where I think we need to look at, is like, the reminders are putting phone away, what's the culture? Because, and I've been in schools and other places where it, it goes beyond the cellphone. Now the kid is using profanity at the teacher, right? That's a whole, like, you're not emailing the, the mom home, like, or the parent home at that point when someone just told the teacher, go fly a kite, right? Like, just, it's a lot more of a conversation that you're getting into, what's the response of the prompt? So, or again, like, we, we want to abide by this, we want to make sure that no one's using their, their phones, how do we engage students in their learning again? Break the, the, the social media addiction, break the cyberbullying, we want to break all those things, but the responses may or may result in different infractions, right? And so I think that's where we need to look at, and the first, second offense is, it's the habitual person, I'm not putting my phone away. Well, it's going to take more than an email, right? Because not for anything, there's going to be parents who say, I don't care what happens, like, someone's not confiscating your, like, your phone. Or there's, like, I can tell you stories right now that a teacher will say, hey, you know, Jen, put your phone away, or get off the phone, and like, I'm going to call your mother, and they're like, well, I'm talking to my mother right now. Right? And that happens. And so the adults have to learn, don't contact your kid during the school either, right? So, so I think, again, when we look at, we can't do hypotheticals all the way through, what are we going to do in this situation? How are we going to monitor it? You know, the first offense, the second offense is still at the classroom level, and again, a common sense approach. If you didn't warn the kid for four months, and you're like, hey, Jen, put your phone away, and you do, you, you're still at that level, it's just a warning, right? I mean, let's, again, that common sense approach as opposed to, I told you three times in class to put your phone away, you might be emailing the parent. So I, I think, again, let's have, create a culture of respect, this is going to be difficult, it's going to be a change in practice. And then, again, what's commonsensical on, on how we do it, and then I think things are going to flesh out. But again, there should be no cellphones, I think we're not, that's a non-negotiable. Like, we're not going to be like in Mr. Poska's class, it's all the way, and Dr. Scott Patty's class, she doesn't care. It has to be all the way, sorry. But it has to be across the board, every class is consistent. And then the warnings and going through that aspect of it.
So I have a, a question about this, and I, I meant to email this to you for policy, but there are some kids that come to school with their own laptops and not the Chromebooks, and let's say they have a MacBook and they're able to iMessage and have apps on there. Are we going to make sure that kids are only bringing in school-issued Chromebooks?
The rule would be the same. So the rule is all personal communication devices must be put off and away during the school day. So if you have your personal MacBook or tablet or Kindle e-reader that also does messaging apps, that is not allowed under state law, and it needs to be treated the same. Now, there could be isolated exceptions, depending on the circumstance. So if there's a, I, I don't know, a huge DECA project, right, and the only way they can get it to run is on this particular device, there is a mechanism for getting a permission from administration for that specific use. But I don't see that happening, because I think our Chromebooks are very good.
Well, the, hold on one second, because the, the boys had, the guys, sorry, guys, the boys.
So what I was saying was, what I, I want to echo everything that Dr. Andre had said. The issue about this isn't going to be the, the issue with the policy isn't going to be the kids who use their phones, say, five times throughout the entire school year. That's not, that's not the reason why we have these first, second, subsequent offenses. Like, that, that's just a simple, please put your phone away. Again, the culture, respect, everything you said. But for the habitual offenders, that's when we get other people involved, right? So maybe we take out second offense and just do subsequent offenses, or we do major-minor, something like that. Or we do major, minor, something like that. I completely see what you're saying there. And-
Do you want me to-
Yeah, you go now.
Do you want me to bring up the point that I told you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One concern was the fact of, like, enforcing this during lunch and other, like, passing periods. I mean, you can't really enforce that. There's hundreds of students walking in the hallways. Some of them are going to be on their phone. Actually, probably a lot of them are going to be on their phone. You can't get every single one of them, so I mean-
And I don't think the point is to get kids. Let me, let me just be really clear. But I will say that Manchester had a similar policy last year, although they did allow it at certain times of the day. Merrimack, for the last year, has had a no-cellphone policy bell-to-bell in all of their schools. To the point that they make kids take their Apple Watches off and put them away. And they have not experienced any gigantic issues with kids not, like, taking them out of their pockets and powering them on for the three-minute walk down the hall. So I think the idea is that the culture is that you're going to put it away and it's going to stay away all day. And if kids need help with this, this district has got to come up with a way to provide some support for kids who are struggling with that. Because I do think there's an addictive nature. And I don't know what that plan will be, but, but there's going to have to be some sort of something there.
I've actually reached out to the National Prevention Coalition because if we're looking at it as if it is an addiction, almost like, you know, when we were 16, 17, getting caught smoking in school, you had the smoking cessation classes that you had to take? And it's a way of, I mean, essentially, if we're calling, using cellphones in addiction, then there needs to be harm reduction components to it. But, so, and they were, they were on board with that and were willing to work with us.
Right, as far as taking it out in the hallway or at lunchtime, I mean, I'll be completely transparent. I, at the State House, voted for the bill that was instructional time but would have allowed lunch in hallways. I was one of only 47 people out of 400 who was like, no, I don't think all day is appropriate. So clearly, I'm not in favor of this. However, I was outvoted and we have, we have what we have. The explanation based on the testimony at the State House, which was compelling, is that, that some schools have significant issues with kids using cellphones to videotape and to cyberbully in the hall, in the hallways. Videotape kids, incite fights so that they can videotape them and post them. We can't have this in school. It's not healthy for anyone. So we have to come up with this culture where we are putting them away all day, no matter what. And that actually brings me to another section, and we can come back to the Shell, May, in a second. The policy under C also has a special restriction for when you're not at school, but it's during the school day, so like field trips, et cetera. You're not, there's no video recording people at any time with any video recording device, including a cellphone, at school-sponsored activities. So it is actually against another law. We just don't enforce it very often. So, so, yeah. Teachers are going to be paying attention in the hallways and directing kids to put them away, I'm sure. I don't, I don't think it's going to be fun for anyone.
Well, we got what we got. You get what you get, and you don't get upset.
I do think that the safety, the testimony at the State House about safety concerns was compelling. I get it. So.
Okay.
So back to will and shall. No, will or may? What do we write down? Do we want to alter it to say may based on, or do we think that that makes it less clear for teachers? I don't know. I'm looking at the board.
What did, what did, I know you guys had teacher input during the meeting. What was there? What did they say during the meeting? Because I know you guys talked about this.
So the, what came from the teacher group in the first meeting was they wanted it all to be admin contacting home. I don't necessarily want it to always sent to the office if they don't have to be.
Really?
But that's, that's a parent.
Sorry, sorry. I thought the teachers in here were very in favor of teachers and parents building a rapport together.
So the second meeting around the table was administrators.
So was that with the one that I went to last time?
Last, last, last week.
Last week, yeah.
Tuesday.
Yeah, and weren't the-
That was administrators.
Oh, so the administrators were in favor of the teachers building a rapport?
Yes.
Yes. I also support teachers building a rapport.
Tom?
So I have a question. I know that as we unpack it and everything today, and we're still trying to wordsmith it and everything, what's in place today? Because I, my understanding was, last year, there was no cellphones in class, that they weren't allowed to use them.
So what's in place now is what has been in the handbooks for years, which is absolutely no cellphones at the elementary or middle levels. At the high school levels, it was no cells, phones during instructional time unless allowed by your teacher. And there was no prohibition on personal, like, laptops. So that's what's in place now. However, we have to follow the state law. So the state law just says, bell-to-bell, figure out the consequences yourself. And we have, under JIC, the class-three offenses, which is discuss the matter, contact the parent, develop a behavioral contract, detention, work with the admin. But that's just class three. It's not necessarily, there's a whole bunch of things that fall under class-three offenses. So, but the state law says we have to have a specific cellphone policy. JIC is insufficient. And there are specific places it has to go. Like, it has to be an addendum to the handbooks, has to be sent out at the beginning of the year to every parent. So we need something that will go home with every student at the beginning of the year.
I was just saying, like, as we wordsmith it in the next 35 minutes allotted for this meeting, would we be able to stand on that? Because it's none in the elementary schools. Is instructional time on there? But we can just say, from bell-to-bell, until further notice, we stand on the state, right? We don't have to rush through this process because there's still so much to talk about.
No, I believe what Heather's saying is we have to have a policy that outlines what the consequences are. We have to have that in place before the school year starts.
We can't just go with what we had last year. We must have-
Have a specific policy. It has to be accessible.
So in-
So we have to, we can't rest on it. I mean, we would love to rest on our handbook. It's been working just fine, I think. Again, I'm not going to say much about this, but-
I mean, the feedback that we got from, at the first policy meeting, was that it hasn't been working as well as people would like it to work.
But we need to come up with something. We can't just rest on what we already have.
So, yes, the law specifically requires us to provide this to families in specific areas, on our website, sent home and in the handbooks before school starts. And just, every single district is doing this right now. They all have their meetings this weekend, next week. I've been talking to people from other boards.
So back to the will and the may. I think-
Just because at policy, I'm, I was one who said that there should be that, took it out of the first step and said the second step.
Yeah.
And that should have a will. And again, the reason for the will is to have that first communication be from a teacher. So we're not, you know, so, and making that first thing just be a warning. You know, hey, put away your phone. And then it's the second step. But at that point, it's will because we want the teacher to be the first person the parent's hearing from and not going directly to the admin and having to hear from the first time.
Yep.
And it can be an email, right? Like, email exists.
Right, it can be an email, and we're not specifying what the email needs to say. It just says, it's contact.
I think in policy, I forget who it was, maybe it was Mr. Poska, had said, like, the email could be, you know, I asked your child, you know, a couple of times to put away their cellphone, and they did. Like, that could be the email, not necessarily, and they're still struggling, and I'm going to send them to the office next time. So, I, I, I don't know. Go ahead.
But then you responded by saying, if I'm a mom, and if I get an email that, oh, your kid was really respectful when he put his phone away, I'm still not going to, I'm still going to say, you know, why didn't, why would you put your phone out in the first place? Not, oh, good job being kind and respectful.
That's right. I forgot I talked about how mean of a mom I am.
Yeah. But anyways, I think I've spoken enough about the may-will aspect. I'll just default to whatever you guys think on that. I'm, I'm all out.
Ms. Lamphier?
I was at policy too, and the conversation that we had about the may and the will was over between first offense and second offense. I personally was in favor of having the teachers do it at the first offense just because I felt like that would be, because of the way the administration phrased the request for that. And also because I thought it would be good to have that as a deterrent for the kids when they first come in on the first day. And the conversation that we had was about taking the may out, the contact, out of the first offense. But we never spoke about taking it out of the second offense because I thought at the policy meeting that we were all pretty much in agreement that we wanted that step. Like, like Mr. Johnson said, the step of contacting the parents before the administrators have to contact them.
Yeah, then I was under the wrong impression. Because I even have the clip of me asking for clarification. I sent it to Ms. Raymond, and, but, but it's okay. I must have gotten the wrong idea. It's fine. Will, may, whatever.
As someone who didn't go to the policy meeting, I wasn't able to attend, I'd work. As I was reading over the policy, it was my interpretation that, like, the first offense, that would be the teacher telling the student to put the phone away. The second offense, right? If, it's up to teacher discretion if they can, you know, if they, if they want to email, they can. But if it's like, you know, if it's not that much, they can just tell them to put it away again, right? If it's subsequent offenses, it was mine, that line, the teacher staff will notify the parent guardian of repeated offenses. It was my interpretation that that would happen first, and then they'd get sent to the AP, like, they'd do both. Like, so the teacher would contact, and then they send the, the person to the AP.
I think it's, I think it's an option. So, for example, if you have a student who you've talked to four times this week, right? The, the third or fourth time, you're going to let the parent know, hey, I'm talking to so-and-so again. And you're going to tell the kid, if I have to tell you one more time this week, I'm going to send you to the office. And then the next day, they come back and they do it again, that's the office. It's not necessarily, I'm going to email them, hey, FYI, I'm sending your child to the office right now. Because that's a waste of everyone's time.
To Shray's point, like, that's, if you look at that subsequent offense, it starts with teacher staff will notify, and then it says the student may be sent to the assistant principal. So it's not a, you know, third offense, you're automatically off to see the assistant principal. It still can be dealt with in the classroom with contact to the parents. It's not automatically going.
Yeah, with the way we're talking about it in this board, with the common sense and all that stuff, that makes sense. I completely agree with that. I just want to make sure that this policy is reflecting that same common sense mindset we come in with.
I think that there needs to be some, not just getting this out to the community, but also providing some support to staff on like, what does this mean? And what are the, what are this administration's expectations for teachers? I don't think it would be fair to just approve it, hand it to every teacher, and be like, here you go, figure it out. Because that, it's just not helpful. And, and I think we have to continue to go back to the purpose of this, which is to have a distraction-free learning environment, a respectful environment, but also to provide support for kids who are struggling, not necessarily be punitive, right? So the, the point of getting sent to the office is not to get punished. The point is to figure out a plan that will work, right? To help a kid be successful with, with letting go of the cellphone.
And I think to that point, I think you have to remember, this is a K to 12 policy. So I think the perspective that a lot of us are thinking from is at the high school level, which is, again, I think these concerns are accurate. But this is also K to 12, and I think providing in the subsequent offenses, trying to provide some, some leeway for the classroom teachers and administrators, how they're going to deal with it, is very appropriate. And I think, you know, to the point that's been made, we're trying to create that culture, you know, trying to work with students and families as this comes up. And then if we have habitual offenders, try to work with that going forward. The work that we've done here with this policy kind of creates that culture. And I would say that the, the policy that was presented to us by the state is much more punitive in nature. And so we did not want to go down that route. We really wanted to kind of work with the students and work with the families about what these next steps are.
And so to my point, that's why I'm, I'm in favor of changing the one in the second offense to may, leaving the one in the subsequent offenses to will. So that point, they can decide if they want to send an email. If it's subsequent, they can send, they have to send the email before they go further and take any further steps.
I'm personally comfortable with making that motion unless administration tells me not to.
I'd like to make sure it's okay with Mr. Poska because I know we were on the different end of things quite a bit.
No, I, at this point, I think it's, you know, I think it goes back to what we said before, you know? If it's may, the possibility exists that the first time that Ms. Raymond hears about a cellphone issue may be coming from an assistant principal. And that's one of the things that we said we wanted to avoid. And we wanted to put that in place so communication could start prior to that. I don't look at this as punitive. I think it's really about building relationships and, and kind of working with, with students and staff. And I think the, you know, the teachers also work with the administrators, saying, hey, listen, I'm, I'm working with Ms. Raymond, but I, I see a potential issue down the road. That might be happening. And I think when that says may, we take that out of play. I think will kind of puts us in a place to let us know that we're all working together to, you know, to work with these families and the students about, about the concerns that may arise.
So I never wanted the students to go straight to the AP before the parent is contacted. I was, I, I thought that when it came, comes to subsequent offenses, it's the student-teacher will notify the parent guardian of repeated offenses. That's like one, like, one of the first subsequent offenses. Then for the next subsequent offenses, the student may be sent to the assistant principal to discuss the offense. I, like, again, I told you, I'm in favor of teacher-student report. That's why, yeah, so I see what you're saying. I'd also like to add a line here about the teacher being the main driver of enforcement of this policy. And I'd also like to add a line about the respect, the building a culture of respect. I think it's very important that, as you guys said, with the purpose and everything, it's not just that we're setting rules up, we're actually expressing what we want to happen, right? And the motive behind those rules.
Protecting the education time.
So do you, if you go to, to Section A about the purpose, because it says on the, the last line of that first paragraph, the intent is to support an engaging, distraction-free learning environment. We could add a respectful in there somewhere. Otherwise, I would, I don't know where else I would put it.
I mean, even in there, we have while honoring students' needs and related to health, accessibility and language development. So we could probably-
I think you guys are just one step ahead of me. Like, it's already, it's already there. I don't even need to ask for it. Awesome. What about the teacher being the main driver of this? Because if we want it to be a really common sense, common sense thing, shouldn't we say somewhere that, hey, the teacher is the main person who decides how this goes?
Well, I think that's why teacher is mentioned first in all three steps.
Oh, my God, really?
But I don't have the word respectful under purpose, so we could add that.
It's fine, it's one word, but, okay. Thank you.
Shray just wants his laptop. That's what he wants.
Yes.
I think Mr. Shaw has a point. I think this will be difficult for some students, especially students who have gotten accustomed to using their personal laptops as-
Especially me.
And, and Mr. Shaw also pointed out at our policy meeting that there are apps that our district has been using, like, I forget what it's called, but there's some app-
MyFlex.
MyFlex, that students use at the high schools, both high schools, for signing out of their e-block and into a different class, like, to go to a club or to study or to make up a test with the teacher. These are academic uses for, you know, that we have utilized cellphones for. So I think the district is going to have to make arrangements to meet those needs. I don't know, Google Classroom or some other piece of technology that's on the district-issue Chromebooks.
I think Ms. Daniels-Williams brought up a point at the start about adding a section. I just completely forgot what it was, but I remember I liked it. Can you repeat that, please?
So I think that we, I, I don't remember that far back. What, what I think that we should do is make sure that we're protecting the class time, but also remembering that this is a new policy. We do have a policy- also remembering that this is a new policy, we do have a policy. Why do one today, do one in four weeks, do one in six weeks? Why can't we just do it right? Like, that's my thing today. I mean, I will go with the board on whatever it is you decide, but we don't even have wordage, we don't know where we're gonna put stuff, we're not gonna do this, we're not gonna do that, but we can add it later.
What do you mean, we don't have wordage? We have two and a half pages of words that people have been working on for 11 months.
You just said that we could add two things.
He wanted to add the word respectful and change shall to may, uh, will to may.
Right.
I mean, those are not...
Yeah, I also don't, sorry, I apologize, but I also don't think we will get the right policy unless we try it out first. That's, like, I genuinely just don't think we can get it right the first time, I think it's a trial and error process. So that's why, like, will, may, at the end of the, respectful, no respectful, like, at the end of the day, it's a few words, I don't really care that much. I just wanna make sure that we can, like, in the future, once we see the errors, we can go back and amend them.
And the state law requires us to review it annually.
I do agree with Shrey here, I think this is something that we can come back to pretty easily, we can just keep working on it. This is, this is obviously, I mean, this is new, right? We can't get it right the first time. You have, like, and since it's all across the state, I'm sure there's gonna be, like, some things that all the districts find in common that are, like, things that need to be worked on, right? And maybe that even leads to the law being changed or something, but, I mean, again, it's, this is our first, like, what, school year with this, and we're gonna have to try it out first, and I think it's something that we will need to come back to eventually.
It's also gonna be interesting when you guys get back to school, and you get together, and then you actually formulate, okay, guys, what don't we like?
Yeah, no kidding, huh?
You know, you know, this dude, you guys haven't had a chance to experience this yet, so once it starts, I'm sure you'll be hearing from your fellow students about, you know, what's working and what's not working.
So we do need to give parents a heads up on what's gonna be happening, what's, what generally to expect from the school in regards to their student and the use of their electronics. So I think this, I think our school is, for the most part, a respectful school, I think that, like, policy or not, I think our administrators are, I mean, whenever they come in here, they're talking about, like, building you guys up and making students become awesome. So I think that's just, like, the overall culture, is you guys have a very respectful building that you guys are learning in. But I think this policy is just fine, and I think we don't need to do a lot of changes on it, and I think we can vote on it tonight, because we need to get the parents, we need to get the parents buy-in, and I'd like to get yelled at before school starts and after. Ms. Gilio?
Hi, I've been unusually quiet tonight, and I like the consequences as stated. I like, I'm happy with the wording of them the way they are, but I totally agree with the respect part being put earlier in the policy. Other than that, I think I agree with everyone that we just have to put it out there, try to do it, and then reconvene and talk with the people in the schools and see how it's going. We could ace it, we could do a great job right from the beginning, we don't know, you know? But I'm happy with the way the consequences are written.
So do we wanna put in the first sentence, the district is committed to supporting a respectful, engaging, and distraction-free learning environment, just right there?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that way.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this? I know you guys spent a significant amount of time in several policy meetings and special meetings about this, and more time tonight.
I, no, I just think it's, I think it's healthy for the district to have these kinds of conversations here, especially since we don't have a large public presence, and I have every confidence that people will read about this in the inkling and then come to our next meeting if they have problems. So, which is fine and helpful. And policy meets every month, so if we discover that there's a glaring problem in the first couple of months of school, we certainly can bring it back.
I have one, period one, last thing to say, I promise. Instead of doing first or second offense, is there any way we could do major minor offense or trivial substantial offense, just because, no?
No, I think that gives, I think that gives too much wiggle room for each individual class, it needs, it needs to start off with being black and white, right?
But also because JIC classifies offenses as minor or moderate or severe, and I don't wanna introduce a new classification system that is inconsistent...
It's a cellphone use level three offense.
Right, that is inconsistent with the overarching behavior codes, right? Because that...
Yeah, okay, I'm fine with it then.
However, I mean, I think that this is something that Student Voice, Student Senate, there are lots of student groups, could make a student committee on electronic devices to provide information to you guys to bring back to us.
We'll just protest riots.
So...
I didn't make the...
I know, and I do, I mean, I'll vote on this, and I'll vote in support of this, because I know you guys worked on it, but I just think this is an absolutely ridiculous thing that we need to be doing in schools, it shouldn't come down from the state, it should come from us. But that's my own personal opinion, but we have to get it done, and that's that. Nobody has to agree with me, but...
At the end of the day, we have to follow state law. Like, that's really whether we agree or disagree with state laws.
Till we've changed state law, which apparently can be done. Anyway, I think we're done, what? No, it can be done, I was, because we created a new rule, you can do whatever you want.
So I will make a couple of motions, if people are ready. My first motion is to suspend the rules to allow us to vote on JICJ this evening, even though it's only the first reading.
Aye. Second.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
You opposed? Okay.
Yes, breaking the rules.
Okay. 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 Can you on?
All right, so my second motion is that we approve policy JICJ, student use of personal electronic communication devices, with the following change. I'm just waiting for Ms. Lampier to catch up, because it's different than what she has in her book. Okay, with the following change, amend section A first sentence by adding the word respectful before engaging, and using appropriate Oxford commas.
By adding, can you start out by adding and read the last?
Adding the word respectful.
Supporting irresectful, engaging, and distraction-free.
In front of the word engaging. And using Oxford commas. People can just pry those away from me later, I just, I don't understand why we're getting rid of them, they're really important.
Can I second that?
Yes.
I second that.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio.
It's because of the Oxford commas.
Right?
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay, all those in favor of approving policy JICJ as amended, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
All right, tiny update for policy, we have something like...
No cell phones allowed in this boardroom ever again. Audience knows screens, if our kids have to do it, we have to do it. Let's practice what we preach.
And you can only bring school-issued Chromebooks, nothing else.
Which you might actually be on.
Right, so, okay, so policy...
Not Heather, Heather's the one breaking the rules.
Listen, I'm sorry, it's 7:48 now, I know that there's still a significant chunk of the agenda to get to. So policy meets again next month, we start from scratch, there are like 37 policies that need to be updated because of legal changes, so we're gonna be working through those over the next few months. It'll be fun and exciting, everyone should come.
Okay. All right, this brings us up to Committee on Human Resources, so I will hand the floor over to Ms. Gilio.
I'm looking for a recommendation to suspend the rules to consider items from the HR meeting held earlier this evening.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor of breaking the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
I like the consistency.
Okay, so first of all, I make a motion that we approve the personnel recommendations of July 21st, 2025, which was approved by our committee earlier this evening.
Second. Thank you, all those in favor of approving the personnel recommendations from earlier tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I make a motion that we approve the administration recommendation, which reads that we recommend election of Tracy Griffin Hagan to the position of assistant principal at Mount Pleasant Elementary School at an annual salary of $92,400.
Second. Thank you, all those in favor of approving the administrative recommendation of July 21st, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, and finally, I make a motion to approve the senior administrative team contracts. I need to add something to that motion, right?
My, I think the motion was just by name, the contracts for Mr. Poska, Dr. Scarpetti, and Mr. Gray.
Right, so it would, like, add their three names to that motion.
I don't think I had any other information in the motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Yay.
Okay, this brings us up to, sorry, I got stuck doing something else, one second. This brings us up to, we have no unfinished business, this brings us up to our new business, so I will hand the floor over to Dr. Andre.
So I'm looking for a recommendation to approve an enrollment study, which is an enrollment study add-on contract with Harriman for the use of the facility's master plan at the amount of, not to exceed $18,200, a count provided by the Board of Alderman. There's a memo in your packet we got on this, essentially, we think it's essential to include an enrollment study with our strategic plan going on, facility use. The last time we did an enrollment study was a number of years ago with Mr. Smith, and then it was a few years prior to that. So if we're talking about the facilities and how we're using the buildings in 2030 and beyond, I think it's prudent for us to make sure that we have the most accurate, up-to-date enrollment projections moving forward, and this wasn't part of the original scope of work.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Oh, go ahead.
So I would move to table it for, at this time, the district is already trying to figure out where we're gonna spend other monies, so that is something that we possibly could come back to. I just wanted to ask, could it be tabled for now, that it wasn't something that we should do?
Dr. Andre, you'll step in, if you don't mind, please.
Yeah, I mean, just, if I, if I may, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, so this money is already allocated in the total budget for the facility study. So it's assigned to this project, we cannot move this $15,000 or $18,000 to another item. It's assigned to this project only.
Yep, so Dr. Andre's point is 100% accurate, the Board of Alderman gave us up to $325,000 for this specific project as a whole. To Dr. Andre's point, going ahead and adding this student enrollment study on top of what's already been approved, we really are only looking to increase our original motion by $4,400, and we still actually are under that $325,000 threshold that the Board of Alderman did give to us. So to Dr. Andre's point, unfortunately, we can't take this money and move it somewhere else, it was only for this project. And just to continue to move us forward in the facility master plan, it is an important piece that we really should do throughout the facility master plan.
In timing, if I may, in timing wise, we're hoping to have the facility study done by, like, the holidays, by January. If you delay that, this facility study is gonna throw off their recommendations.
I, like I said, is also something, we can't spend it on, we can spend it on something else, we just have to keep it in that line, it doesn't have to be for the study, and it is an increase, is up to the board what they wanna do. I just said I wanted to put it out there, because I think that as we are moving different monies around, and different things, and finance, and the things that we're talking about, that we should be very conscientious of where we're moving things and what we're doing, and this is something that we did do before, so we don't have to redo it. That's my personal opinion, to ask to table it, it doesn't have to pass, I just wanted to put it out there. Thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
I have two things. One, I think that looking at enrollments is absolutely critical, because the last information we got was part of the redistricting for the middle schools, and his projections were that we ought to be closing like half a dozen schools, and I wanna see how that has changed or not changed over time. I happened to come across a sheet, when I was going through some papers yesterday, that Sandra Ziem, a former board member, had given me back in 2017, and at that time, district enrollment was 11,600-ish students, and now we're at 9,700 such some students. So we've definitely lost significant enrollment, everybody has. I think we need to look at the trends since COVID, especially as there's major changes at the state level. The second part of it is a question, and the question is about the nature of the facility study, because I don't remember, and I apologize, does this only look at needs, or does it also look at potential costs to fix problems that they see? Because I'm wondering about, I'm just remembering, we did the middle school project, how steel suddenly, like, shot up 30% in the middle of our, you know, decision-making period, and so, will this, will the Harriman thing take that into consideration, or is that beyond the scope?
So they identify areas of concern, I don't think they get into the level of detail of how much it's gonna cost, it might be a ballpark snapshot in time. But I can follow up on that, but it is a, it will be a very thorough study at the end of the day, but I'm not...
We need to know what the needs are, but I'm jumping ahead to...
And I don't wanna misspeak, saying that they will be providing the quotes when they're not, so I just don't have the RFP in front of me, but...
Okay. I can look it up myself later, I just...
I personally thought trends and data was part of the original, so I'm a little shocked to hear that we have to add this on anyway, I thought this was part of what they were saying they were gonna do, was given population trends, what it looked like we needed, but I guess I was wrong. Probably not, but it's fine.
So it was in their response, saying this was an add-on?
Yeah.
So...
And we could choose to pick it up later?
Correct.
All right, I didn't vote for it in the first place, so... Ms. Lampier?
So the last study that we had, like, the population study that Mr. Smith did, was very contentious, and it was left a bad taste, I think, in everybody's mouth. We disagreed with this man who came here and told us we had to close so many schools, and we didn't like that he was unfamiliar with Nashua, or even with New England, he was from the Midwest. So I'm really happy that we're gonna have this done, and we're gonna have it done by Harriman, who's been working with the district for so many years, and I really know a lot about Nashua and what our needs are, so I'm excited about it.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor...
Did we vote on my tabling it?
Did anybody second your motion?
Oh, if no, if that's how it goes, okay.
Did you make a full, did you make a full motion, or just ask if you wanted to?
No, I was making a full motion, that's why. I said it twice, if nobody seconds it, then it goes on, I just wanted, we didn't address that, I wanted to make sure it did.
Yeah, I mean, does anybody wanna second Ms. Daniels-Williams' request to table?
I would second...
I would second it for, out of respect for Ms. Daniels-Williams, but I would then vote against it. So I don't know if you want me to do that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I think that we already, like, hashed it out. I just was making sure that it, everything was clear on the table before the vote, so.
Okay. Yeah, Heather is seconding it, so.
No, Ms. Daniels-Williams was just saying that she doesn't want to go forward with the vote, so I wouldn't need to. But I would write down that Ms. Daniels-Williams discussed the potential for tabling, and it was decided not to.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, back to the motion at hand. Any other comments or questions about it? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the facility master plan add-on service, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'm going to turn the next agenda item over to Mr. Gray to talk about the food service student meal rate increase.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Andre, I appreciate it. So I want to take us through a couple of slides, and then share some information, and then kind of discuss what we are proposing. So when we look at school district lunches, the last time we, as Nashua School District, went ahead and did a lunch increase, was back in fiscal year 2017. I'm sure as many folks in this room and probably watching, we are all feeling that food prices have drastically increased over the last decade or so. And just to level set, our elementary lunches are currently anywhere between $2.55 and $2.75. Last time, when we did an increase in prices, we did a 20-cent increase at the elementary level. At the secondary level, back when we did an increase in 2017, we went ahead and did roughly a 25-cent increase at the secondary level for the middle and high school. A couple of things to point out. So year-over-year increases, the substantial increases that we have seen as a district related to food, food service, has not only been food itself, it's been supplies, it's been labor and benefits as well. So this year specifically, our food service team spent 45% higher than what their budgeted line item was for food.
Ouch.
That is roughly an $800,000 increase. So again, I'm sure everybody in this room, I know myself, we go to the grocery store, have a family of two young kids, you know, you're walking out of there and you're like, wait, how'd that bill get? What it is. So this really is going to result in us proposing an increase for 2025, 2026, and moving forward. Before everybody panics, I truly just want to make sure the message is extremely clear that our free population for food and lunch, excuse me, for breakfast and lunch is still free. That is not changing. Our reduced is still going to be the same. That bucket is not changing. Breakfast is still free for the reduced population. And the reduced costs for lunch at all grade levels, as long as the families qualify, are still at 40 cents. That is not changing either. We are not the only school district facing this. There are several school districts in the state that are doing an increase this year. We are still doing probably, on the lower side, a lower increase than what some of our neighboring towns are doing. Myself, the administration team, our new Director of Food Service, we've been working extremely closely with the state of New Hampshire. They have given us some guidelines that I'm going to propose shortly on how we go ahead and make these increases. Just one new rule to point out. There was a new rule that came forward in regards to our fund balance. Please remember, our food service team is a self-sustaining part of our business. If they do not have enough in their overall special revenue account, then we do need to go ahead and pick up that additional cost within the operating budget. So if there is not an increase that is given this year and forward, unfortunately, we will be possibly risking our special revenue account to dip into a deficit, and we do not want that. As far as the new rule goes, our fund balance, we can no longer carry anything greater than three months on average of revenue in our fund balance in special revenue. That roughly for us as a school district, and based off of the overall revenue we get year-over-year and month-over-month, should be somewhere right around $700,000. Just something to point out, I think we, as the school district, we offer a ton of meal choices, not only to our students, but our staff. We have a lot of staff that eat with us on a daily basis. So kudos to the food service team. This might be a magnifying glass that folks need, but I really just wanted to give a quick snapshot of fiscal year 2017 to 2025. You know, the majority of kind of the changes here is our fund balance was drastically lower back in 2017. We brought in a lot of money through COVID over the years, and again, that's why some of the changes came with that fund balance. The biggest drivers in what we spend, again, are our food service costs, as well as our wages and benefits, and then any supplies. So I wanted to just take a minute to talk about bad debt. I think we've seen a lot of probably other school districts in the news over the last year. Nashua actually is one of the lowest bad debt balances in the state of New Hampshire. So I share that in saying, we're always going to make sure our kiddos eat. But we also have a good ratio of, there's about $4,600 right now sitting in bad debt, which is drastically lower than a lot of the school districts around us. So what does all this mean? And I'm sorry to be the bearer of bad news. This means an increase, a slight increase. We truly took a step back to say, what is the minimal increase that we can go ahead and do? So at the elementary level for breakfast, again, free is always free, reduced is always free for breakfast, it is 40 cents for lunch. We are not changing either one of those. So at the elementary level for breakfast across the district, they are currently paying $1.25. We are proposing that moves up to $1.50. At the middle school level, from $1.50 to $1.75, and at the high school for breakfast, from $1.75 to $2. Lunch, again, a 20-cent increase at the elementary level, so going from $2.55 to $2.75. At the middle school and high school, a 25-cent increase. Middle school going from $2.75 to $3, and at the high school, from $3 to $3.25. I just wanted to point out real quick, related to, you'll see milk up there, eight ounces. We currently, across the district right now, if somebody buys a milk, it is 50 cents. It actually cost us 43 cents. So we are proposing, and we're seeing several other school districts doing the same thing, we're proposing that milk gets increased from 50 cents to 75 cents. Adult meals is actually where you're going to see the biggest increase, unfortunately. So the adult breakfast, and we actually, right now, and we continue to be one of the lowest school districts related to pricing for adult meals. We have a whole bunch of comparisons, if anybody's interested in seeing what some of our neighboring towns are doing. So the adult breakfasts currently are kind of all over the place. Elementary is $2, middle schools are $2.25, high school is $2.50. We're proposing that all adult breakfasts across the board goes to $3.50. Also, for adult lunches, across the board right now, they are $3.50. I know we have some lovely salad bars at our high schools. I don't know where you can go and get a salad for $3.50, never mind $4.50. I think I paid almost $30 for my salad for lunch today, with chicken on it. So maybe I need to go to the high school to buy my lunch. But we are proposing a $3.50 increase to $4.50 across the board, again, for adult lunches. The last slide that is up here is just a quick breakdown of our population. So the majority of our population are paying students. We have a slight percentage that qualify for reduced, and a bigger percentage that qualifies for free. Again, our free population, as long as they qualify, and we'll post this so that the application and the link is readily available. I would encourage families, if they need help and support and assistance, please fill out the application. Our food service team is wonderful to work with. So please don't be shy. I know sometimes it's nerve-wracking, but our team will be here to support it. And then same thing for reduced. If, if folks are feeling like they need to fill out an application, please do so. So at this point, I will open it up for questions, if I can answer anything related to the increases that we're proposing.
So at the high schools, we get offered a bunch of different snacks and drinks associated with our lunch. Will those prices also be going up?
So I think what you were referring to is probably that à la carte. At this time, that à la carte is not being changed. We decided, in working with the Department of Education, it made sense right now to focus on our meals, and then this year, we'll take a look at overall pricing.
I see. And as a high school student who has friends who buy lunches, I don't like increasing the price. So I'm asking, is there anything else we can do to get the revenue up? I know you said this was a self-sufficient fund. Can we fundraise on our own to bring the, to enter costs up, or do we, the only way?
Yeah, I like your creative mindset, for sure, but unfortunately, the answer is no. We really only have two or three items that cost the most throughout this budget. It's our wages and benefits, so it's our people that work here and support the kitchen staff, or it's the revenue that is pulled in.
I see.
Ms. Raymond?
Thanks. So I just, kudos to the food service people. I know Concord, for example, has been in the news for having over $100,000 in unpaid lunch debt that they're having to figure out what to do in their operating budget. So it's impressive that our food service team and our families have managed to keep ours so low. I am just infuriated with the idea that we have, we had a bill at the State House that would have provided free lunch for people, and instead, we decided to spend tens of millions of dollars on voucher giveaways to people who are using them for everything from private school tuition to Disney vacations. And now we're looking to charge our children extra to eat at school, and I am just so angry. Like, I don't even want to discuss it. I'm, I get it, we have, we can't have this go into the negative, we just can't. It's not, it's not possible. I know, I would rather get it out of the adult meals, even though we don't pay teachers anything either. So I, this whole thing is just, I'm beyond, beyond speech, apparently.
Are we going to be looking into our school bucks? I know every time you make a payment on it, there is a fee associated with it. Is there a way to offset this by not having that fee anymore?
Unfortunately, I think the answer is no. We are doing some work right now with my school bucks to see what the lowest kind of fee is. I know, like, the neighboring town that I live in with my daughters, their rates are going up, not only for lunch, but also the fee related to where we load the money for their meals. So I think just, you know, everything's kind of going up. We truly are. Again, we worked with the state to say, what's the minimal increase that we can do? Unfortunately, if there is not some type of increase, and this year, you would see in the fund balance, we're ending this fiscal year of '25 with roughly probably $325,000 left. And we started the year with about $1.4 million in our fund balance. So again, we spent almost $1 million more than what we anticipated.
Yeah. I mean, as somebody who, I still pack my kids' lunch because I find it to be cheaper than this, but I'm super cheap, and I'll spend a Sunday afternoon. My time matters, Jen, my time matters. So this is disappointing, but it's also, Ms. Gilio?
Hi. I echo Ms. Raymond's sadness at decisions that have been made in Concord that are not in the best interests of any of our students. However, understanding the need here, I would like to make the motion to support this.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. So I think we could probably go round and round in circles about how disappointed we are at the fact that the state is not supporting our students equitably, so let's just not. Oh, Ms. Lampier?
So I like the slideshow a lot. Thank you for spelling it out so clearly for us. I'm wondering if we can, if it'll be posted on the, on the school website, the school district website? And also, I was wondering, do you think this is going to be enough to make up for the inflation that you've seen over the past couple of years?
Snapshot in time, from a data standpoint, I'm hopeful. As we've been doing in the finance and ops meetings on a monthly basis, if for some reason we get midway through the year and it doesn't seem like it's going to be enough, absolutely, I'll bring it forward. I think if I look at some of the comps in the area, or I call them comps, but some of our neighboring school districts, you know, a lot of their lunch prices, even at the elementary level, are already at $3, or this year alone are being bumped to $3. I think this is a good starting point. I think it gives us the ability to say, how can we get creative and make sure that we're not spending extra on food that we don't need? And with a new food service director, she's very dialed in. She would have been here this evening, but had a prior commitment. So we are absolutely looking at kind of all angles. And again, if it's not an increase to the overall prices, the only other kind of lever that we have is potentially laying off some of our staff, or moving some of this into our general operating budget. I would not advise either one of those.
Right, because our food service fund pays for the people working within food service.
That is correct. Yep, it is a self-sustaining fund, so it means all the revenue that comes in offsets the expenses.
Right. I just wanted to make sure people knew that.
Yeah.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
So this is really, I echo what's been said before. It's really hard to hear because we could have prevented this. We could prevent passing this on to the kids because this is exactly what I asked for at budget time, to put it in this budget. You just said, if we had put it in the, that maybe next year, we're going to have to put it into the budget, the operating cost, and all that kind of stuff. These are kids. I asked about this because this, kids go hungry. They don't ask for help because they're going to get a sun butter sandwich. We had this whole conversation right around budget time. I am so disappointed because even at that time, I asked for the numbers. I asked if we could use the I asked if we could use the, one of the special revenue funds for this to give them free lunch this year because we knew that it was gonna be hard. We foreseeed all this. We, I'm ve, I'm very disappointed. We, we have fundraisers here in our schools, empty bowls, to feed these kids. And now the ones that can or that are just making it to be able, we're gonna raise it for them? It absolutely breaks my heart because we talked about this. We could have, as a board, we could have done something about this. We asked for the numbers. We never got a clear answer about that. You said, oh, no.
I'll disagree with you on that.
You said, nobody in Nashua Public Schools goes hungry because they're offered a sun butter sandwich. That is what you said.
I just wanna, I just wanna be, um, we did respond with how much it was gonna cost for feeding all students and it was in the millions. So we did respond to that of how much it was gonna cost.
It was over two million dollars.
So we did answer your question on how much it was gonna cost. However, I just want to be careful on just, um, the work and the presentation here. Uh, it just, I just want to make sure that, again, um, we're coming forward because costs are going up. It's, I don't, there hasn't been any unwilling or answers going forward of why this is in the budget or not in the budget. So I just wanted, because it's coming across as it's a, an attack on Mr. Gray or the administration. So I just want to be really careful on, and just the work that was done in the budget cycle.
So let me, let me speak to that because this is not an attack on administration or Mr. Gray. This is not. What I'm saying is that we are sitting here surprised with our face in our hands saying, oh, well, we're so sorry that we gotta do these to these kids. But we're not because we talked about it. We knew that it cost two million dollars. We could have asked for that in the budget, sir. I'm not putting it on you. I said it was as a board, we vote as a unit. We vote as a unit and we, I specifically asked for the numbers because we knew that this year was gonna be hard. In, in March, when we pulled the number for the budget, we knew that January had already happened and that we were taking away things. Heather tells us all the time what's going on up there at the state. This is going away, that's going away, that's going away. We, we knew this in March. And that's why we said, let's pull the numbers. Let's know that it's two million dollars before the budget went to the alderman, before it went to the city, before whatever. We, we knew that, we had the information. So what I'm saying is I'm taking full responsibility for this. I'm saying that me sitting here as a board member, not being able to stand up for those kids then when I knew that they needed the help, when I asked this board, we need this for the kids. But now, we're saying, charge them. We just up the thing for the sports. We, we, and we just keep adding.
I would recommend, if there's going to be a hardship on families because of this increase, that they fill out the application for the free and reduced lunch. I, I don't know if the federal standards are going to change in regards to what is going to be considered, um, an income level to be able to get free and reduced lunch. But it's absolutely, if this is going to be a hardship on families, we're, we have, we have mechanisms in place where families can come in and, and complete that application. So please pass it along. If you're, if you're hearing rumblings that people can't afford this, remind them to fill out that application. Because if it's, I mean, free obviously is free. Forty percent or forty cents is still, you know, you add it up throughout the year, that can be a pretty significant part of some people's budget. And for people that this is gonna push them into a different, you know, it's gonna change the way that their budgets look in their house, absolutely come back and fill out that application. So it is unfortunate and I hope people recognize that there are supports in place to offset this. And we'll just have to, I mean, yeah, do we want to give all kids free lunches? Absolutely.
And, um, just one, one more thing. What I'm saying is like, I have four kids, so at almost ninety dollars a month, that's almost four hundred dollars.
Yeah.
For lunch at school. Like you said, we would pack lunch, we would do whatever, but how about if you don't have those resources? And we know that is what the Nashua community is going through at this time, at this time.
Yeah, and I, I hope they fill out the app. And I know people don't fill out the, the free and reduced lunch because there's some stigma in it, but really, I'd rather the stigma happen for a quick minute and kids eat than people not fill it out and not eat. So let, let's push, like, you know what? If the government isn't gonna help us reduce the food costs, then let's have them help out the families. Right? Mr. Johnson?
I was just gonna say, one of the things that people out there need to realize is it doesn't, you may realize, you may not realize how, you know, much you can make and still qualify for free and reduced lunch.
Right.
That's one of the things that, you know, it's not, it's not SNAP, it's not, you know, Medicare. It's, it's a higher threshold. And there's a lot of people have to look at it and realize that if they do apply for these things, they can qualify for the free and reduced lunch. The other thing with that as well, if you do qualify for free or reduced lunch, your athletic fees are also wiped out.
All fees are.
Right. So it's very important for people to understand out there how important it is to fill out that app, even if you don't think you qualify, fill it out.
Right.
Fill it out, submit it because you may be surprised and you may qualify even though you don't think you do.
And it can increase our Title I funds, too.
Yep. So it's very important for people, no matter where they think they are, if they think they're struggling, take the time to fill out the form. You, there's resources that can help you with that to fill out the form and submit it and get those benefits.
So reminder at Nashua Goes Back to School, we had laptops and interpreters set up last year to help families fill out the application in the library. Or I hope we're gonna do that again. Um, but I think we've also set up, when you get a balance on your account, not only are you notified that you have a balance, but here is also the link to apply for it. So that's, that's one of our policies is if somebody goes into the red more than I think it's, I know I get the shut off notice at ten dollars. Oliver, he gets those monster drinks. That was not a good policy to pass, it's really expensive. Um, but there are mechanisms in place to get that application in front of families.
If I can just add on that. So I think just reminding everybody too, and Mr. Gray had it up there, um, for our bad debt, it's around six thousand dollars, which isn't, again, um, in comparison to other districts, we're doing a pretty good job and for the amount of students that we feed, six thousand dollars isn't horrible. Um, not great. Um, but I think one of the things that in our policy, what we.
It's less than a dollar for each student.
One thing that we changed was really, um, to be more proactive. So whether it's helping families fill out paperwork, but we also know there's other families that life happens. So they may be, um, you know, someone who can afford lunch and all of a sudden we see that, um, the balance is creeping up or a student's not eating. Um, their first call isn't from the food service. It's actually from a guidance counselor or a social worker asking what's going on with the families and we make a plan from there. Um, because again, students shouldn't be in the middle of, of a family financial kind of crisis if that's going on. And that, that, um, approach has worked. And so we've, whether our families qualify or don't qualify or, you know, a, a family member may have just been laid off from work, we are really working family by family so that we can put a, a process in place so that students are eating. Um, so again, I think, um, we are working with families to ensure, you know, that, that students, we're meeting the students' basic needs of, um, eating once or twice and some, some students does grab and go dinners as well. So, um, this is on our, um, forefront and I think we've been moving proactively and, and unfortunately, like, you saw just the food costs are going up and again, the change of policy on how much we can carry.
Okay. Mr. Shaw?
If we're doing this, is there a way to automatically consider all families for free and reduced lunch without them needing to fill out an application or waiver? And then they can opt out if they want, no?
You have to fill out the application and then you have to mark that you want to do it every year. It's very, you can't sign people up for.
Okay.
For benefits without their permission. I'd love to, though. That'd be easy.
Right. There's, it's a federal program. There was another bill at the State House that didn't pass that would have allowed people to automatically, if they get food stamps or Medicaid, automatically enroll in free and reduced lunch to eliminate one more set of paperwork, but it didn't pass.
If you do have free and reduced lunch and you do have Medicaid, you can click off a box that says that they can check with New Hampshire, the, the New Hampshire benefits, like New Hampshire EZ. If you continue to get Medicaid, you will continue to be re-enrolled without having to do the paperwork. But you have to opt into that. Choked on my own. It's a lot. Okay, so, sorry, Ms. Lamphier? I'd like to, we still have a non-public one to get into.
I just wanted to say, um, just ink for anybody that might be watching or reading the Nashua Ink Link later, um, we really couldn't have done the free school lunches. We went to the Board of Aldermen and requested four point seven percent increase, which was much more than the mayor had asked us to, um, to, to come to him with. And the Board of Aldermen approved us for four point five percent, which was very generous of them. There was no room and, there was no room for another couple of million dollars in that. And, um, really, the changes, the, the free school lunches need to come from either the state government or the federal government because Nash, uh, New Hampshire does not fund its schools properly and our federal government is like holding back funds from us now. So if we want to make a change, like giving kids free lunches, that's something we need to advocate for at the state or federal level. That's not something that we as a school board can really move forward on.
Thank you, Ms. Lamphier. And that actually brings us up into our next bullet point. So let's wrap up the, the meal rate increase. Ms. Julia made the motion, Mr. Johnson, um, seconded it. So, um, all those in favor begrudgingly of increasing the student meal rate, say aye.
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 Nay.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you, guys.
For my constituents.
Thank you. Okay, this brings us up to our update on federal grants discussion.
So, thank you. Um, when we put this on the agenda on Friday, it was a little more bleak. I think every day, um, the federal funding delays, uh, we just get an update. So, um, on Friday afternoon, uh, there's has been delays in Title, uh, two A, Title III, Title IV A and Title IV B. That was as of Friday. Um, as of this morning, Title IV B has been released, uh, or will be released and that's approximately six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. That's our Twenty First Century programs. Um, so just in general, for federal funds, just for your information, we received three point five million dollars in IDEA. Um, we received eighty-seven thousand, this is from last year. Um, we received eighty-seven thousand dollars in IDEA pre-K and we received five point two million dollars in Title I A. That money has, has not been delayed. We will receive that money going forward. Um, Title I A will be released, um, in two pots. It'll be forty percent, um, currently and then sixty percent around the holidays. But we will receive what our allocation's going to be. And last year, it was around five point two million. It may or may not be around that number. Um, but that will be released. What's being delayed is, um, Title I C, which is migrant. Um, but we don't receive any money for that. So we, we don't qualify for, um, Title I C. Um, what's also being delayed is Title II A, which is around professional development. And that's approximately, last year was seven hundred thousand dollars. Title III, which supports our ELL population, that's around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and Title IV A, um, which is, which supports, um, well-rounded students, technology innovation and social emotional well-being. That money is also delayed. Um, so that's approximately, um, two point, oh, sorry, I'm just doing the math here. Um, one point nine million dollars. That's currently delayed in federal funding, which may or may not be released in October. So again, I think the good news is Title IV B has been released and we're able to move forward with our Twenty First Century programs, which is our before and after school care. Um, and that's, that's, uh, as of this morning. If it wasn't released, then we would have to really problem solve on where we were going to go. We've also been in contact with the Department of Education. So we'll use Twenty First Century. If we looked at a different funding source to offset the cost of, uh, the Twenty First Century program, we potentially could lose future funding. So if they ever release Title IV B in the future, we took it out of the grant, we paid for it locally, then if we put it back into the grant, it would be cost of planting and that would be against the law. So the other areas of Title II, Title III, Title IV, we're in kind of a waiting pattern right now. Um, again, to see if we, um, if those funds are ever gonna be released come October. Um, because if we do take those priorities out and put it into the operating budget or we find an outside provider who wants to give us one point nine million dollars, um, then again, we're at risk of losing future federal money. So we're waiting for some guidance from the Department of Ed on what is gonna be the timeline of if these funds are gonna be rele, be re, um, released. That being said, we're working as an admin team, just looking at Title II, Title III, Title IV A. What's our priorities? If this money is never released in the future, what are we gonna ask, like, offset? Um, if it becomes a part of the operating budget? How do we reprioritize if we truly need those, um, things that are in the, the federal grants? Um, how does it become into the operating budget? And then, um, how do we reprioritize? Or are we just saying, it was in Title II, it's going away? I don't think we can get rid of professional development. I don't think we can get rid of, um, the, some of the services that's in Title, uh, III for our ELL students and same thing with Title IV about our innovation. So, um, really putting it on the agenda was notifying the, the public, this is where we're at. And then the biggest concern really was Title IV B, which was the Twenty First Century grant. Um, and then how do we support families and different options? But now that that money's released, um, I think it is, um, it will still support our neediest families with before and after school care.
Julia?
Um, I, I, this is good news. I happened to be with you on Friday when you found out that they were gonna release the money for Twenty First Century. With school starting in just five weeks, there must have been parents panicking all over Nashua, wondering how they were gonna provide for their children at the beginning of the school day and after the school day in order to continue to work and support their families. So while this is good news, I wish it had come sooner. And is it fully funding the way it was last year?
Um, yes, give it, give or take a couple of dollars here or there, but it's, it's not a significant slash, if any.
Okay, so that is good news. I wish it had come sooner. Parents have probably had many sleepless nights over this.
Yeah. Well, the other aspect of they don't, I don't know if it's common knowledge that where the Twenty First Century funds are coming from, right? And so when, you know, it's on the news and federal funds are being stalled, I don't think anybody equates Twenty First Century or before and after school care to a federal program. So I, I, I think there may have been just more lack of awareness. So I, I, I think there may have been just more lack of awareness. That's all I have for updates.
Right. That's a lot of updates. Okay, so this brings us up to our second public comment period. I'm gonna guess our, our rambunctious audience left. We just have, we just have Maya now, which is fine. So I do have a small thing to go into non-public for. I'm hoping maybe we can wrap up board members' comments and then let these guys go. We don't need them anymore. Go into this non-public for a hot 10 seconds and then come back in, close out the meeting. But consensus? Is that okay? Okay. So no? Second public, right? All good? Okay. So I'd like to open up board member comments by saying, happy birthday, Rob. Today is his birthday. Happy birthday.
That's how I wanna spend my birthday.
Sorry about that. You didn't have to come.
I had to come.
I, I appreciate that. Okay, so board member comments, start over here again with Ms. Raymond.
I'm just gonna remind everyone once again of Nashua Goes Back to School Night, August 21st, at the Nashua Public Library. It's a really great event. Everyone should go. Are you questioning the date?
No, I thought
All checked.
I, I thought I remember hearing some rumblings that it may not be happening in the library plaza, that it may be happening somewhere else, but
As of last week, it was still in the library plaza. If that changes, I can let people know.
Okay. Ms. Prin?
Not sure what to say. I just hope the public is aware of what's going on on the federal level, on the state level, and that if they can do anything to make their voices heard, call, call the governor's office. I, I noticed that New Hampshire is one of, we're surrounded by states that are filing lawsuits and we're not doing, New Hampshire's not doing anything. So if, if you're concerned about the future of your children, make those calls, make your voices heard. You gotta do something.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Elections have consequences. Vote. Whenever you can, vote. Always speak to your representatives in government to not allow things like this to happen to us.
Thank you. Ms. Julia?
We all need to speak out. As a child of the 60s, I remember those days when we thought we could make the world a better place and we still can do that.
Thank you. Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Today was a real hard day, but it was a good look at how we support our community and how we can support our community. And I'm thankful to the members of the board and to the administration that we employ that we keep going. We, we do the best that we can, that we make sure that we're showing up each and every time and for those that are in need. Because there might be something that we can do. But I, I love how everyone was saying, vote, be engaged, be active, speak out, ask for what you need. An ounce of prevention is worth more than a pound of cure.
Ms. Lamphier?
So the, the summer graduation for the Nashua High School District is coming up this week. It's Thursday, July 24th. It's at 6:00 PM at the Nashua High School South Auditorium. And I just wanted to mention it because the kids and adults that are graduating here deserve recognition for their great accomplishments. And the team that works with them is pretty extraordinarily, extraordinary as well. So we're lucky to have, we're lucky to have that program.
We have JSSBC, though. At 7:00. I mean, you can still go. Just leave a little. Prioritize your time. I just wanna remind everybody that there is one month left of summer vacation. And even though it feels like the world is heavy on our shoulders in regards to what is happening to our families and to our educational systems, we can still get out and enjoy our families and our kids and our state parks and the enjoyment that comes with vitamin D and the great wide outdoors. So don't forget to have fun amidst all the chaos. That's what your kids will remember, is the happy times. So with that, I would like to ask that we go into a non-public under RSA 91A32A. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are now in non-public at 8:44.